I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Consider a motion to approve the agenda?
Could we?
Oh, you know what? Actually, I need an amendment. We need to remove two from regular business.
I'm sorry. Will you repeat that? Madam Chair?
I need to remove item two from the regular business.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I've got a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to come up and address the board, please do so at this time. Just first state your name and address.
I'm Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. I am here again to talk about the CVRs that have not been released in court two weeks ago. The judge did say that those CVRs are indeed public record, and there's been four way foa. I'm sorry saying that. Get so nervous up here. That there's other public information that has been requested that has not been released I am totally frustrated and discouraged about why we are not being allowed to access to public records. This is basically a really a freedom of information situation. I'm not sure why we have to go to court in order to get and receive public records. I still, I just don't understand it. I just never, I never believed that there was anything really going on, but when we are prevented from seeing the CVR, seeing what's going on, I feel then there is an issue of why do a cover-up? And that's what I believe this is. So please, Commissioners, Auditor Lund, Sheriff, please release the public records that were requested. If we have to end up in court again, I guess so be it. But I just don't understand why it has to go that far for public records. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up? If not, are there any Commissioner reports?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
A couple of items. Last, when Sherry was at Thursday, we had a meeting at the, in a kind of a condominium concept, it's called the Co-op in Sioux Falls, in which our auditor and myself talked to the constituents about our budget and about the pending vote that we will have as far as courtrooms are to determination on which program we want to go with. It was well-attended, and we had many favorable comments afterwards. I want to thank our auditor for coming in and providing them with a clarity on our budget and how we, our revenue and our expenditures. She did very well. And also, I'd like to toss something else. At our recent convention, Lincoln County received many safety awards, which probably has been overlooked. They have different categories of gold, silver, and platinum, and we have received in all those categories, and that took the time by our auditor to fill that out, so I want to thank her for that. And, well, I know what you had to assimilate him and stuff like that, so anyway, take a compliment when you can get it.
That was actually John Rombo that filled it out.
Well, thanks for doing it, John. I know you picked up the award, so I just figured out that you were the person that handed them in. That's all, Madam Chair.
All right. First item on our regular business agenda is a quote with Jensen Insurance. Good morning.
Good morning. Greetings from the southern end of the county. It's truly a pleasure to be here. It's an honor to allow us to come to visit with you again. I believe, very humbly, I think this is year number 43 that we've had the opportunity to come to visit, and we really do appreciate. Thank you very much for your trust and allowing us to do that. During those years, we've been insured with Employers Mutual Companies during that period of time. They're a company that's over 100 years old that specializes in doing public Kennedys, a lot of counties, cities, schools, townships across the nation, in all 50 states. And that's where we've been during that period of time. In addition to that, we've got a safety dividend program that we started back in the early 90s, of which we are, happen to be the agency, that's the managing general agency of. I think there's, all are part of about 18 or 19 counties that are in that program. And it allows EMC to focus on that class of business and adjust accordingly. It also allows us to pay a dividend if we can ever get three good years put together that are profitable. And that's sometimes tricky to do, mainly the claims are mainly from the roads and can be pretty significant claims. So it's been kind of few and far between in the dividend world, but it does still allow them to focus on that class of business. Just a couple comments about the trends that are affecting the insurance industry today. That EMC produces a publication. In 2020, there were 22 natural disasters in our country with damage over $1 billion In comparison, over the last 40 years, that average is 6.6. So you can see the trend in the insurance world, and the claims are just skyrocketing. In addition to that, for the last six years, six consecutive years from 15, 2015 to 2020, there's been at least 10 weather-related disasters in our country. And we got another one brewing right now. I heard this morning on the radio that this hurricane Ian is scheduled to be a four, getting close to a five when it hits land. And just another one. These are all typically reinsured, but they all affect us a little bit, even like the derachials we've got here affect us a little bit. So we've got a trend in our property, claims that are concerning, if you will. Also, in the world of trends, the auto, commercial auto continues to be a bit of a problem, mainly from distracted driving. That continues to haunt the claims world as they continue to have a number of claims in that area. So all the companies are struggling with being profitable in the commercial auto area. Our county typically is one of the better ones. Our loss ratio is usually quite low. This last year, we've had a little bit of a rougher year. Our loss ratio last year was about 70%, which normally it's closer to about 17, or lower. But we've had a few claims this last year that have increased the activity and bring our loss ratio up to that. However, even with these claims, you would think that in the cost of inflation and repairs and everything, you'd think we'd be bringing a pretty hefty increase, but fortunately, we're bringing a very modest increase of about 3.4%. And we're pretty pleased with being able to bring that to you folks. The actual, that's the actual rate increase. The premium is up a little more than that because our property values are up about 7% just to try and keep up with inflation. Our inland marine values are up about 156,000. We've got a couple new vehicles, so you know, you're probably looking close to about 7 when you add those things into it. So roughly, that's where we're at. So that's just a little summary about what the industry is doing. The players still remain primarily EMC in the pool. That's who we compete with on a regular basis. And with that in mind, I think I'll turn it over to Son Zach. He's going to hand out a little summary and explain the coverage a little more in detail, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I've, what you have there is a, is a summary, which we'll briefly run over. The first piece you'll see on the summary is a review of the property. And the second handout is the statement of values, which shows the value we have on each, on each building. I'm not going to go through each building, but you'll see we have a total. We, our total property, we're at about 43 million in total property. The courthouse building here is broken out on its own at 26 million, with the courthouse personal property there at 3.2 million. And as Mark had mentioned, the inflation factor is about 7% in property value, total Deductible, the all peril deductible is $5,000 with a wind and hail deductible of 10,000. All the property is insured for pretty much everything except flood and earthquake. Those are the two primary exclusions that we have built into the property. We've got equipment assistance breakdown, which is a, it's an endorsement that gives us power failure, odd power surges that would cause damage to the building or personal property in addition to electric or lightning. The advantage of being on a blanket where we're at, we're not limited to one particular value per building. You know, we have a total value of 40, 43 million. You know, if a tornado or a catastrophic event were to come through, that's kind of our cap, is at that 43 million, but we're not really limited. We're only, we are limited on the courthouse, that is specifically insured. But all the other buildings, we're not limited to that particular amount that you'll see on the statement of values. The next piece that, that we'll jump into is the inland marine, which is all the contractor's equipment. As Mark has mentioned, we're up about 156,000 just by added equipment throughout the year. We're at a total of about 3.2 million. The sheriff's equipment and the vehicles were at about 408,000. Radio towers and the antennas about 86,000. That does carry a $2,500 deductible across the board. We've also got rented equipment of 460,000 as well. And as we get into some of the details, we'll, with the departments, we will get in, have them review the vehicles, the list of equipment and so forth. So I didn't hand that out with all the, all the details. Now, this is where we pick up coverage for the drone, the physical damage for the drone, not the liability that's coming up yet, but we've got a couple drones there as well. Next, we've got the, the business auto. I think we've got 100 and 115 vehicles. We've added a couple this year. We've got million-dollar limit of liability for the vehicles going down the road, and medical payments of 5,000. The medical payments are not on every vehicle. Those that may transport passengers is where we do have medical payments. There's some additional coverages built in to the auto, some smaller items, windshield repair, glass repair, that waived the deductible, zero deductible, a situation like that. Some towing allowed for private passenger vehicles, even the larger vehicles, $100 for the private passenger, 500 for the larger vehicles. We've also got higher than non-owned auto liability. If we were to borrow or rent or loan or lease a vehicle from somebody or a rental place, I guess we do have, wherever it would come from, we do have liability that would extend A handful of vehicles you'll, will have comp and collision on, not all of them, but our deductible, there's $1,000 for comprehensive and collision. Moving on to the general liability there, the general operations for the county, we have a million-dollar limit per occurrence, 2 million for the aggregate limit, which provides bodily injury, property damage, as well as medical payments there of 10,000. The general liability also picks up the, you know, some, the fair board, the weed board, nurses liability, employee benefit liability as well, benefits for any of the employees, whether it be 401K, health insurance, the benefits that the county does provide if an error were to be made, liability is there for instances like that, as well as employment practices liability, the hiring and firing that is done. It's kind of outside of the DNO or ENO or linebacker, but the employment practices liability also falls under that portion. We've also got the drone liability, which does carry a separate limit of 100,000. That's all we are able to get. The drone is 100,000 of liability and $2,500 deductible. We've also got liability of 2 million, some premises liability extended out to the airport. Employee benefit liability, I kind of touched on that. That does date back to 1999, anything that were to arise from now going back, 1999. Along with the, another line of liability is the ENO or the linebackers, EMC calls it. He has a million-dollar limit of liability for the decisions that are made by the board and so forth, and $10,000 deductible. It does come into play in a situation where we get into something like that. That retrodate dates back to 1988. It's a pretty broad insuring agreement that EMC offers under that linebacker. The law enforcement liability, wrongful defamation of character, false arrests, anything along those lines also falls under that linebacker. Personal injury, you know, moonlighting, things along that line. That 10,000, so we do have a $10,000 deductible, and it's, I think it's been there for, for quite some time, in which there are some options to change deductibles. If we wanted to, a $5,000 deductible, to lower that would bump up about 700 bucks. There are a couple other deductible options. If one wanted to look at those options, you'd spend a few hundred bucks here and there not to change the deductible. But EMC kind of sets those where they, kind of in the sweet spot. Crime, we've got some crime for monies of securities that would be on premises and off premises. We've got $10,000 on premises and off premises, as well as a blanket employee theft. We've got 25,000 for employee. And as you'll see, the, you know, the different positions there will have different amounts, Sherry and Becky and so forth with the specific bonds. And lastly is the, the data compromise, cyber, cyber coverage, which... Jake is typically the guy I work with on the, on the, here we go. Jake is who I typically work with on the cyber. He has kind of advised, I guess, us with the, with these limits here, but data compromise does, there's a $100,000 limit for data compromise. Cyber attack, there's a $250,000 limit there. We did use this here about probably three years ago in the situation. And so it does work, and Jake worked through the specialists, forensic scientists and so forth. So I would probably reach out to Jake, see if he wanted to make any changes on it, but that's kind of the summary of the cyber. Other than that, any questions on any of the, on the different lines?
No questions. I mean, how will it affect the quote? For instance, all the old fairgrounds in Canton? I think we're going to be done with that in about six months.
Okay.
So all those will probably be able to come off at that time.
All the buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. As far as the, we could, we could figure out what the, what the rate is and which buildings are.
Sure.
But yeah, we can take those off.
Okay. And I don't have the exact dates, but our counsel, legal counsel would have those.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's all I had. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Hey, Mark or Zach. First of all, I want to welcome you guys to my neighborhood up there in Sioux Falls. I noticed your building is right across from mine there.
Oh.
So welcome to my neighborhood. But second of all, you said our loss ratio this year was up 70, 30. Could you just maybe tell the commission, but more importantly, the public, what some of the significant losses were for the county this year that had to be covered?
I think I can answer that. There's maybe three or four that's got some reserves on them of significance. I think there may be a couple of auto claims that might still be open of significance. And sometimes the companies put bigger reserves on them than what are really needed. And I think there's a couple reserves on a linebacker claims, on ENO claims. There's a couple reserves there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And it doesn't really take much when they put reserves on there to, to get up to 70%, you know, so hopefully they'll get them resolved less than that. So I don't think it's going to be, hopefully, a problem for us going down the roads.
All right.
But this, this quote includes 3.4% now, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Is it, is it normal under Section 7 that the treasurer's office is insured for more than the other three departments that you made mention?
Yeah. And Jim, I don't know how those, how we really came up with those numbers, maybe just by the dollars that they handle, perhaps. You know, those are just additional bonding limits that were assigned some time ago. They can sure be changed to any, any amount, of course, but that's probably why.
Any other questions or comments?
And I can just add to that, you know, there's 25,000 of on, on all the employees. That can be changed as well. It does include faithful performance of duty for any issues or mistakes that could be made along the way. That comes under that bonding coverage. So it's pretty broad. And I think maybe we did look at that at one time. Did I have that written on there, Zach? Oh, yeah, we did look at that, perhaps increasing the limit on the per employee to 50,100 in the past. And at that time, 50 was about $125 a year more, and 100,000 was 259 a year more, just for your information.
Bill, do we need to act, are we looking for a motion? Do we need action on this? I don't have anything in the share drive, so.
No, it just says, we need to go with Jensen Insurance.
Okay.
We need to go. We need to get a balance for action. We'll have to put on the next.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you for your business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We'll move on to our second reading and public hearing. Item three on our agenda.
The second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning a portion approximately 2.4 acres of the property legally described as tract three popping as addition southwest quarter, section 28, township 99 north, right 51 west, Perry Township, from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval five to zero. Location is 46622278th Street.
Good morning, Commissioners. Toby Brown, representing County Planning Department. The applicant for this item is Ally McLouth. The location is approximately 600 feet to the east of the Lennox corporate limits. The comprehensive plan identifies this particular parcel as an urban expansion area with the city of Lennox. The applicant has been in communication with the city of Lennox regarding the proposal, and the city of Lennox has had no objections to the proposal. As was noted, the subject property is currently zoned A1 agricultural. This property is, has been replatted by the city of Lennox, and this piece over here to the west would be the 2.04 acres that is being proposed for the rezone to commercial. Property adjacent to the west was rezoned to commercial in 1999, and that was part of the Jerry's Auto Sales complex, and it is currently utilized for commercial uses, auto sales. As mentioned, the subject property was just recently replatted by the city of Lennox. The adjacent property to the east, which was part of this parent parcel, is operated by the Faith Presbyterian Church, which is currently still going to operate that on the property. The applicant has submitted a concept plan with the application, which identifies proposal to construct an event center, specifically weddings and other types of events on, on the property, and is proposing to construct an approximately 8,000 square foot building, which be utilized for that. This property is accessed by the county highway, and so the highway department has worked with the applicant and the adjoining property owner to come up with a solution as far as access on the property, and that has been approved by the county. So with that, as mentioned, the planning commission did recommend approval of this. Staff has received no comments at the planning commission public hearing or since that public hearing to today regarding questions or comments regarding this application. As mentioned, I did have conversations with staff from the city of Lennox, and they did support the application with it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Toby. Anybody have any questions? If not, is the applicant present?
The applicant is on the phone.
Okay.
Toby, is this?
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you go ahead and just identify yourself and let us, tell us what you want us to know about your plan?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you, Toby, for doing that. I would, if anything, to be there right now, there's just a huge miscommunication about the time, unfortunately. And so, yes, a plan to open the event hall. All communications with the church are great. I've done everything I can to communicate with everyone around me about the plan, and it's kind of been already announced publicly in hopes that I would get it out there as soon as possible. I understand that needs to be published in the paper if approved for the next 20 days. And as far as I'm aware, everyone's a go for it, which is great. It's nice to have the support of the city, and everyone in the town seems to be very excited about it as well. Is there anything specific that I could answer? I love talking about it, so I, I could go on and on about the theme and the plan and different events, but is there anything specific that you have for me that I could answer?
Any of the Commissioner's? Any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Do you plan, do you plan to, to more or less gut the existing church and use? Because there was kind of an L-shaped situation. I've been by there a bazillion times. So what kind of format are you going to have for that, for that building? Can you kind of go through that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the church is an L shape. It's, it goes east and west, and then a portion of it drops south. And then they have a gravel parking lot. But the parking lot to the west of the church is more like a thin strip of gravel. They utilize more of the south front portion, I guess. And so we, the church and I agreed on a property line, which would be the back end tree of their, oh, I don't know where to, anyway, we agreed on a property line that runs north and south along their gravel parking lot. And so the two point four acres, I'm not sure if they have a picture up for you there or not right now with the plan. But the building itself will run the long way, east and west. The parking lot would be in front, and there'll be a patio in the back. And per the site plan, and if you want to talk about how it's fitting on there, the church has seen it, and there's plenty of room on either side. Obviously, we're able to get everything in there by code. And the new access will obviously really be beneficial. The church was, that was the only thing they were honestly concerned about even a little bit, was having their access either torn up or not acceptable. And so we came to the agreement that I would just pay for a new one, make it twice the size, and then they would have their own side, and I would have mine. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And it's hard when I, I can't see if you do have a picture or not. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Gibbon. I guess, down the road and so on and so forth, maybe this is an appropriate question or isn't. Will you be applying ever for an alcohol license?
The plan currently is just for beer and wine. I could apply for one right now. It's about twenty-five thousand. And I just financially don't see a need to do it. I feel comfortable only doing beer and wine, not liquor, I guess. So yes, I will be applying for an alcohol license. And I don't see myself applying for a liquor license even in the future. There is a plan to annex if that becomes available. And at that point, then, as far as me, the administrator in Lennox, and I have discussed, any liquor license that would be available would be auctioned off. And I'm sure it would go for quite a bit of money. So at that, that's my plan so far, is just to do beer and wine.
Have you visited with your neighbors and obviously the church about this?
Yep, yep. And the neighbors even directly across the road, the Poppinggs. I've had a conversation with him on the phone. He understands what it'll be. And obviously, when you say wedding, that's the first thing they ask, you know, or they assume, obviously, that there's going to be alcohol. And the church obviously brought that up as well. And we came to an agreement, and not necessarily even on paper, that I wouldn't be doing any events Sunday morning, which I'm happy not to do that as well. We go to church. Anyways, and they were worried that maybe litter would be increased. I know that on our latest in Lennox page, when I was discussing with the city, the people that live in Lennox, I guess, one of their concerns as well was litter. Like, would people be throwing beer cans or wine or whatever, increasing the litter along the highway or even in the church parking lot? And so we discussed that and things that we could do if it ends up being a problem. I don't foresee it being an issue. We have trash cans, obviously, outside. I have a fence on both sides of the property. The patio area where people would even be gathering would be outside in the back, not close to the property line. I just, I don't see it being an issue. And the person that did bring it up specifically, this was a Facebook conversation, had made some suggestions, you know, maybe you could get people together to clean up the highway or keep it neater if it became an issue. But like I said, I don't really see that being a problem.
This is Commissioner Schmidt. I live on that, have a farm on that road. And I wouldn't worry about that because there's, even without any activity, there's enough litter, or litter in the roadway that people just throw out there. So I wouldn't, I don't think that's a concern.
Someone else had said that to me as well. But I just, I was trying to make sure to address anyone's concerns. And like I said, that was pretty much the only one that had got brought up. So I, I did my best to, to work through it with that specific person.
We pick up cans all the time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents or proponents for this rezone request? If not, I'd consider a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Can I say thank you, and I appreciate your time, and, and I apologize again for not being there.
Sean, may I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. So the rezone was passed, so good luck with that, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item four. Morning.
Looking to approve, execute the contract with BX Civil for the Lake Elvin structure.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Next item here we have is to approve and execute the resolution removing the Helder Bridge structure that we had a South Dakota grant to remove. Get that off the NBI.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, go ahead.
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Next item is approve and authorize chair to execute agreements for preliminary engineering. We got two structures on one twenty-five and two structures on one thirty-nine.
Okay, you've heard the request. Any questions?
Move for approval.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. And then Sherry, on item seven, you want us to reschedule our meeting from the eighth to the eleventh due to the general?
Correct.
Okay, can I get a motion on that, please?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens.
I've got some discussion on that. Are the members aware that, that's Veterans Day?
Good point. That is a good point. We normally close on the eleventh, then, aren't we, then, Sherry?
Yes.
Yep.
But it's, it's actually the tenth, because it'd be the Thursday. We usually do it the Thursday after the, it must have been a key in error. So it'd be November tenth, Thursday.
I would amend my motion.
To have the meeting on the tenth, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks for the catch.
Is there a second on the motion to amend?
I'll second it.
All right. Thanks for pointing out that, that out, Commissioner Ehrens. Can you go ahead and call the roll, Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. We need to set some meeting times and schedules for the courthouse public meetings. Sherry, is the best, is the best way to do that, to find the locations and see what dates they have available? Or how do you want to handle it?
How do you want to?
Well...
Do we want to go to the city meetings? Do we want to try to find a location to have it? If you tell me the dates, I can find a location. You know, it's kind of like, what will work for you? If you want to be at a city meeting, then I will reach out to each city and get you on the agenda.
Let, let me ask this question. If you put yourself on or ask a city to be on their agenda, how does that provide the opportunity to answer the public's questions by basically inserting yourself into somebody else's meeting? It's like Canton coming here to our meeting and saying, hey, I want to turn your meeting into our question and answer session. So there's nothing wrong with going to the city of Canton, Lennox, Worthing during their city council meetings. But you can't, unless they allow it, you can't provide for any Q and A at the meetings.
The way, and I, I, I do agree with what he's saying. So the way that the meetings are going to be set up, at least what we've requested and how I envision them being set up, is having these presentations with people there to answer questions. The boards spread out, so it wouldn't be something that was being broadcast or anything like that. It would, you know, it's more informational, and I, so I don't know if putting it in the middle of some kind of a structured meeting makes sense. I mean, I could see doing it maybe before or after those meetings, if, you know, if time allowed. The one, I mean, in Harrisburg, where I've seen it work well, is in the entryway of the high school, what they use as a cafeteria, and it's a big open space. So we just want to make sure that we have room for all the boards that we have and the So I don't know if it makes sense to bring some dates of availability back to us for...
You, if you tell me the days you're available, it might be easier for me to find a location.
Well, I think, among, yeah, among the five of us, I mean, if we're having them in the evening, I, I don't have, I don't have any availability problems in the evening.
Yeah, and I think the public is more available in the evenings, too. Now, whether the public chooses to attend or not, that's another issue.
All right.
But at least you make it easier.
So where do we want to do them at? I know we've got the entry of the, I'll find out from the high, or the Harrisburg School where they would want it.
Yeah, because they've done them for the, they've done those meetings for the DOT.
We did it with the redistricting.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, do these have to be an extension of our regular meetings that we have, then on Tuesdays?
Well, they're going to be pub, they're going to be published, so we're all fine being there then, correct?
So they don't necessarily have to be on a Tuesday, you're saying?
Correct. So if we do Harrisburg, we do the high school, where is a good place in Canton?
The depot.
The depot. We could even do it here at the courthouse. I don't...
Well, the courthouse might be better, because we could actually livestream it for people that aren't able to attend.
Madam Chair, which, my question, I guess, is, is there a date that all of us can be at for that meeting that some of the other ones, it wouldn't be unheard of that if one or two members couldn't attend a meeting? It doesn't prohibit the communication to the public, but I would like us to be together for one meeting that's here, livestreamed. I was wondering if the eighteenth of October, if that works for everybody? I'm just picking a date, just, it's the third Tuesday.
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that date's fine with me.
What time?
I think seven? Or you could do it, it's going to be more open house style, so I'd say six, six to eight, maybe, six to seven thirty.
And then the, the public that couldn't attend other meetings to do, we could set up a ability for those to call in for that one?
So are we, when we do the one here, are we doing a presentation style? No, so...
No. The way it's going to be set up is there's a short video with slides that's going to run in a loop every, I don't know, five, ten minutes, depending on what the final length of that ends up being. That would be separate. And then we would have boards set up, hopefully with commissioners and architects and people there at the boards to help answer questions and explain things. And then I'm also hoping to have some kind of handout for folks in case they, you know, are, if people are busy, if they want to stop in and grab a handout, or if they want to take one after they're done, so they can maybe process things a little more, that that would be helpful. So I don't envision it as being a meeting, per se.
Right. So it wouldn't necessarily be livestreamed, is what I'm saying.
Correct. I think we can put the, our presentation, the video presentation, we can probably put that on the website.
Yeah.
And if, you know, the fact sheet or the different slides. So at least that's what we've been talking about and putting these together.
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
If, if we're having one in Canton or, or in the depot, and we're having one in Harrisburg, I think that it's incumbent that we have one, at least make an effort to be in all the areas, because this is a pretty critical issue confronting all the taxpayers. So why wouldn't we put one in Lennox, and why wouldn't we put one in Hudson? Why wouldn't we put one in Worthing? Why wouldn't we put one in Sioux Falls?
That's what we're talking about right now.
So you're looking for locations, are you?
Correct.
I'll find the locations if you tell me the dates.
No.
Because like, the T-City Hall, I could probably get that. The Worthing Fire Hall, I could probably get that. I don't, Hudson Fire Hall, but I need dates.
Why don't we shoot for, why don't we just do them every week? The eleventh, the eighteenth, the twenty-fifth? Just on Tuesday nights at all of the places that, where we can find available space? At least as a starting point.
Do we have a, any timeline on when we're actually going to be trying to make a decision on how to move forward on this?
I envision us making that decision, I would hope, mid to end November.
Okay. It's just...
That was my thoughts by Thanksgiving, I guess.
Costs continue to rise exponentially. And the longer we wait, any, any selection that we make is just costing taxpayers more and more, so.
So you've got six weeks between October eleventh and October fifteenth.
And you can fit all them in, in, on that timeframe?
Well, I'm going to have to look. If you want to go to Hudson and Fairview and...
Well, not every, not every commissioner has to go to all of those. So you could send two commissioners to some of these. But you don't have the material, do you?
We have a video presentation.
We do have, we do have the material.
Are we ever going to see this thing, I mean, be prior to, or?
I've got it in a vault. No, it's, it's just got done, so.
This was done on the nineteenth?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was done on the nineteenth, and not to a level on which I would ever want the public to have to sit through.
So it's...
Fortunately, our staff took it upon themselves, Commissioner, to revamp a, a much better presentation for the public to get the information and assess where we've been and how we've gotten to this point.
So Sherry, does that make sense? Or do you have what you need?
Yes, so I've got five places, the entryway, the high school, the courthouse, Lennox, T-City Hall, and Worthing. That takes me five places, so.
Yeah. Why couldn't we use a school?
And I don't know if there's somewhere in southern Sioux Falls, there's not...
I'd be able to.
The MB, maybe, up by the church. They would maybe have room if they're available on that.
You could do Harrisburg Elementary School, Journey Elementary.
Like we did last time.
Journey. Lennox High School.
Yeah, the high school foyer works great.
Lennox has a, and I'm sure that would be available.
All right.
So that gives me my six places, but then we don't have Hudson and Fairview. So I don't know if somebody wants to, you know, if I've got six weeks, six Tuesdays, I've got six places, and it doesn't include Hudson and Fairview.
It does not.
It does not.
What do you think, Commissioner Gibbon?
Well, we obviously should have something, I would think, in, in Hudson, just as important as...
Where, what do you think would be available? Where, what do you think would be available to do something like that?
Well, we could do it at the Hudson Fire Hall, but if you want to do it on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving and make it seven places?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
We could do that.
I mean, I, I guess I shouldn't obligate him to it. I can call and find out.
Right. All right, are we good on that one, Sherri?
Sure.
Thank you. Next item is, um, talking about purchase of a Canton property. Is that? I don't know if, did Bill think that needed to be an executive, or? All right, um, well, we have Commissioner Ehrens and Commissioner Poppins on that, so who wants to tee that up?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Commissioner Poppins and myself had an opportunity to speak to the, uh, current owner of the bank building right across from us here, um, and, uh, we've discussed with council and other commissioners that were, uh, the purpose of this, uh, issue today is for the board to take action to make an offer on that building. The reason that, uh, just so the public knows, the reason that we're considering, uh, purchasing the building is because apparently we're running out of space here in this courthouse. So, uh, the building is up for sale. There's been, for the last decade, I think commissioners have discussed wanting to buy that property. Building is, uh, pretty solid. We've all had a chance to tour it. I think now is the time, if the commission is so inclined, to take action to acquire that building.
Madam Chair, uh, I concur with, uh, Commissioner Ehrens on most parts. Uh, this is a decision I wish we weren't in, but unfortunately we are. And, uh, to lend us with flexibility moving forward, um, with what looks to be one of the very viable options of maintaining this, this location, um, it would be encumbered of us to acquire it, uh, some other space. Although not ideal, I think it is a viable option, um, and will support making the purchase or trying to purchase, uh, with the caveat without making significant remodeling changes to the building, using for practical purposes as much as is, um, for current, um, and, and near future uses.
Okay, so this is on our agenda to approve a purchase. We don't have a, we don't have a contract, we don't have a price, correct?
What we're looking for, Madam Chair, is authorization to get into negotiation with the owner and come back with hopefully a, uh, offer.
Okay, is, uh, is that your motion, Commissioner?
I will offer that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Move on to item ten on our agenda. I don't know, Bill just stepped out. Commissioner Gibbon, do you want to take that one?
Yes, I've been in contact with, uh, Alliance Communications. They have notified me, as you probably saw in your packet, they are interested in acquiring, uh, a small area of land close to our highway department. Again, making reference of a telecommunications, I believe it is, or an infrastructure hut, to eventually, uh, provide more service to, uh, area in the southern part of our county. And particularly, there's a lot of, uh, I guess, uh, area that need to be addressed for better, uh, service with, uh, internet and broadband, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, again, uh, as you probably did see, uh, they are interested in the purchase of one acre of land. I think, um, you kind of see that location, so it's a matter of, uh, if we want to enter into some kind of a, uh, agreement with them or have the state's attorney look into the possibility of, uh, I guess, uh, selling.
Mr. Golden, did you have any input into that? Because wouldn't we have to, if we own it, we'd have to split it off and surplus it?
You have to split it off, surplus it, you'd also have to make it available for the rest of the public, either through bids or through a realtor.
Thoughts, comments?
I'm not opposed to, uh, making that happen, because we don't have people jumping out of their seats to want to buy county land and property, and it's apparently not being used up there. A few of the questions I have, though, I think would probably be answered by council during the negotiations, so I won't air those in public here. Um, I just think, but the one issue we probably need to talk about in public is which one acre of land are we talking about here? Is it the one immediately adjacent to the highway shop, or is it further to the south, towards the southernmost end, or, you know? So that's, I think, one of the issues that I've got, is exactly which acre of land is this? Is there?
Yeah.
So what?
It's in the, I didn't.
It's in the.
In the file.
Yeah.
What do, what should, would we do, Bill, right now as far as action, if any?
I mean, if you want us to explore it, we could, we'd have to go ahead and do a plat and break out an acre and set it up.
What, what would be the cost of doing that? As far as replating, I mean, ballpark?
If we do a survey.
Right.
Uh, it'd be the cost of the survey, probably fifteen hundred to two thousand, I think, has been some of them. Uh, so we'd have to have it platted, surveyed, um.
Well, we need to have it rezoned?
For their use, we'd probably have to have it rezoned, so we'd have to bring it back in front of the commission, um.
Which I find a conflict if we're rezoning to sell a property to somebody. I'm not opposed to, uh, an endeavor like this, but I just inherently, there's just red flags on doing something like this. Especially if we're the governing body going to rezone a property that we're going to try to sell at a certain undetermined price, at a, not a clear location. So I just, I, I feel unfortunately there's too many hurdles that are, uh, pretty high to be, um, transparent on a situation like this, so it'd be difficult for me to, to think that I should support something like this at this time.
Madam Chair, I, I don't necessarily disagree with the sale of land, but are we opening a precedent here? So that if one acre is desired to be sold, are we amenable to having other, um, businesses come in that may find, uh, for whatever purpose, a location to be desirable or for storage purposes, for companies or things like that? I mean, is this something that we want to, uh, venture into? Just a question.
Your question leads to, one of my concerns is, we could then start to look as a developer, which we're not, so. Again, I, Alliance, I have all support that they need to provide services. Uh, unfortunately, there's just too many red flags for me to be, um, uh, not to say that there's, um, some cloudiness in, in trying to do something like this, so.
These folks are public, are these folks considered a public utility? I believe they are. They're cable, they're a cable, cable phone company, right? Is that what it is? I believe that's what they are, yes.
Internet phone.
Internet phones, cave, okay, okay.
Rural communication service provider. They want to, they're expanding their fiber optic network.
And I think there's a big push, you know, at the state level to want to increase fiber optic connectivity to rural areas. And, um, when local governments are approached with that, um, I think that is a priority that should probably be considered is what role does a local government play in trying to help out with that kind of state priority? Clearly, the public wants increased, uh, fiber optic connectivity, especially in rural areas. Here in South Dakota, that's very important, uh, that folks out in farm country are able to get that. So from that point of view, I could support it. The only issue I have is trying to figure out which one acre parcel out of the, uh, number of acres we own there, that it makes sense to give them, so that it doesn't encumber the, or I should just say, doesn't lower the value of the rest of the property, um, now.
For their use.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, I know that they put their little red square here on, uh, on a chunk of land right next to the highway, or, excuse me, the gravel road that goes there, and, uh, you know, but is that the best one acre plot to give them? If we're going to sell off those pieces of land? And also, what exactly is it they're building here? I mean, is it, is, is this little building going to look like one of those huts that we see right next to a cell phone tower? I mean.
Excuse me, it says it's twelve foot by twenty foot and standard to many utility companies in the country. That's, that's really all the information that they gave about what it's going to look like. So it's not very big. Wouldn't they, I mean, is, would a lease be possible?
That was my question, Madam Chair, is, if this, if that's the only structure and not going to be parking other things, I think it would be more appropriate that they look at trying to lease a, a piece of ground out there versus actually somewhere.
I know the goal was for them to try to put down about a hundred and fifty miles worth of fiber optic, uh, at least preliminary goal, anyway, and, um, if, if you are in Hudson, some of those areas, internet service is very difficult at times. Uh, I've experienced that myself, so, uh, I do believe there's a need. It's just a question, is this the right fit?
Well, can we do this, not sign off on this today? Could we just direct our state's attorney to have a, this, and commission, if a commissioner or two wants to join, then that's fine. Not going to volunteer you, Commissioner Gibbon, but.
Yes.
Can we just, to get off the dime here, can we just say, hey, let's engage in some talks and discussions and kind of get some color in the lines here and figure out what's going on, and then maybe bring something back to us? Maybe, maybe it's a good fit for both parties, maybe it's not.
I think that's a great idea as well, because, you know, when I lived out on an acreage, internet was really hard to get, and when you could get it, it was really expensive.
Madam Chair, could we also ponder, have them try to explain why this property was identified versus other private property that's in the area? Um, uh, again, have no desire to step on somebody else's opportunity to sell a piece to them if that's what they're looking for, so.
All right.
I'd like to see that footprint that they talked about.
Can I just get a motion to authorize our state's attorney's office to look into it?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thanks. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Um, we need a motion to go into executive session under S D C L one twenty-five, two sub one and sub four.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, sub, uh, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Sub three as well, I think.
Okay.
I'll just throw that in there.
Okay, sure.
I'll second the motion.
All right.
Commissioner Landine, when you come back from executive session, can we discuss option, or number ten again? Or, not ten, I'm sorry, the number eight for scheduling?
We sure can. I, um, I'm scheduled to be in court in Sioux Falls, so I'm going to probably be stepping out here in a few minutes. So, um.
Do schools have volleyball on Tuesdays?
That's right.
Okay.
Just one thing to think about. The other thing to think about, pushing it into late November, we're going to cut into next year's construction season.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins. Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's any other, uh, alibis.
Did, um, uh, Chair, did we have different dates in mind for the meetings since Tuesday?
I don't have different dates in mind. Do you have different dates in mind?
Uh, Wednesdays typically don't work, uh, Tuesdays don't work because of volleyball, we said.
Right, the high schools, the high schools are going to have volleyball, so if you wanted to set them up where there's two meetings a work week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we can probably do whatever we're going to have the meetings.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do a five-thirty meeting in one town and a seven-thirty meeting in another town? And bunch us up a little bit? Is that not possible as well?
You guys tell me whatever you want to do and we'll.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of, yeah, anybody?
Well, what, what about, for the sake of making this real easy, we just shift this over from Tuesday nights to Thursday nights and stay on the same schedule?
Then we are going to have a meeting on Thanksgiving night?
Well, we'll, you know, if there's a holiday, we obviously won't work on the holiday.
Okay. Except for the meeting here at the courthouse, you still, that's still on the eighteenth?
Madam Auditor, I think the, the message that got, that their, Tiffany, Madam Chair, had shared was, our evenings are open. Find us some times that will work.
And the, only two times that you're really looking at doing it at a school is when you're looking at the Harrisburg schools.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'd be doing it at like the four H center, fire halls or city halls, so.
And the city hall, Harrisburg, is, uh, they have a meeting room, don't they, as well?
The city hall?
They use the school.
They use the school.
They just use the school.
The elementary school. So you, you could still.
The Phoenix? How big is the Phoenix?
You could still do a meeting at the elementary school on a Tuesday night, uh, in Harrisburg.
I'm good with that, too.
So you're only competing with the event itself, not on the venue. And then if you use Journey Elementary, same thing.
Okay, so we can.
So we could still stick with Tuesdays.
We can leave it on Tuesdays, and then it will be at Harrisburg and Journey Elementary. I'll get this all lined up, and then I'll send you guys out the schedule and we'll get it published.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.